We're live.
Good evening, we will now call our City Council, we're here to meet in Monday May 4th, open, and at this time, Leslie, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yeah. Housewoman Fitch?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Councilman Fluter?
Here.
Councilman Adrian?
Here.
Councilman Holmerson?
Here.
Mayor Fitch?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Let's go present before the business conducted through this evening will be for the continued government of our city, and if you can provide your experience in that state.
And then, right to the flag of the United States of America, and consider the law which stands one nation under God, and the citizens of their region, that is strong.
Thank you very much, Leslie. All right, I'd like to open with the statement about what we are doing tonight during this, and as pursuant to second order number twenty dash sixty-nine by the Office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March twentieth, twenty twenty, municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a form of its members physically or at any specific location, and utilizing communications media technologies such as telephonic or video conferencing, as provided by section one two zero five four five B two Florida statutes. For members of the council appearing remotely and for public participation, this is now allowable. While a forum of council members are physically present for this meeting along with a minimal number of key staff, we are following the governor's emergency orders and the city's emergency declarations by having less than ten people physically present, and we are maintaining the distance of six feet between people, following other CDC guidelines for social distancing and protection. I'd now like to ask the city attorney to explain the procedures for public comment and participation in this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The following are the city rules for using the communications media technology as provided by section one twenty point fifty-four, paragraph five B two Florida statutes, and these are rules were adopted by the city council for our procedures on April sixth, two thousand twenty. This meeting is being streamed on YouTube Live and on the city's Facebook page. The agenda and backup material in the agenda packet are posted on the city's website as usual, and is sent forth in the notice for this meeting also posted last week. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting were asked to review the agenda and submit their questions or comments on agenda items by email to the city clerk with their name and address and a reference to the agenda item on which they wish to comment. It was also explained in the notice that questions or comments on agenda items could be mailed directly to the city clerk's attention at the City of Gulf Rees City Hall, ten seventy Shoreline Drive, Gulf Rees, Florida, three two five six one. The city requested that all correspondence be received by four P M. Central Time today, May fourth. As we go through the agenda during this meeting tonight, the mayor will ask for public comment on the agenda items as usual. At that point in the meeting, the clerk will read any questions or comments submitted, and the mayor and council members will then have the opportunity to respond, just as if the comments were being made in person. If there are follow-up comments or questions for others who didn't submit a question or comment wished to be heard, those comments should be made through the online YouTube Live, and there you should provide your name, address, and question or comment, which will be read and responded to by the council. So you can go to the little chat box, we do, you know, want make everyone to understand that you can comment during this meeting on an agenda item, and the clerk will be watching those comments as they come in during the meeting and will read them at the appropriate time. We do also want you to know that we'll be following usual protocols in that comments should be kept to no more than three minutes, and of course should be appropriate and on the agenda item which we are on. Then anyone who would like to participate during the public forum at the end of the meeting should also comment on the YouTube Live online site with your name, address, and any question or comment that you have during the public forum portion of the meeting. And again, the standard rules will apply, the comments being limited to three minutes for public forum as well. Does the council have any questions on the process?
I would like to just add that if you see me on my phone this evening, I'm speaking with our local news reporters to make sure that they can hear us, that they're not having any technical difficulties, and also with our city clerk, since we're at a distance, we're not usually so far apart, so just hope you see me picking up my phone, that it's either the news reporters or Leslie.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I will ask for approval of the April twentieth, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes.
Good approval.
Okay. Did we have any comments about this? I don't have any comments on the minutes.
One little typo.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Where it's on action items, agenda item B is in Bravo. The additional extended warranty clause is eleven hundred dollars each for a total of two, twenty two hundred. Total's right, but they just keep it that way, I don't think that matters, it was all.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, we've got a motion, and do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And any discussion by council, any additional discussion? All right, all payers say aye and aye, go same side. All right, thank you. Five zero. Now we'll go on to the ordinance votes, this will be first reading, an ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two zero. Leslie, would you please read this?
Yes ma'am, I am going to dial in, Mr. Steve Rhodes, regarding the utility, the franchise agreement.
Steve Rhodes is our area external affairs director who negotiated the franchise agreement renewal with the city, we're going to make them available by phone, just in case the council will have any questions against him, even though this is first reading.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Steve Rhodes, this is Leslie Guyer, we're now participating in the city council meeting.
Hi, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I also have here with the Joe Boulay, who is manager of the city council's whole party group, if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. And I'm going to read that ordinance by time, all right, please. Ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two zero, an ordinance ranging to Gulf Power Company, its successors, and its time, an electric franchise imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing for monthly payments to the City of Gulf Rees, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and resolutions, providing for examination of the franchise's key records, providing for incorporation to appendix A of the city code, and providing for several ability, and providing for effective date.
All right, thank you. So Mayor, if you would, would you like to provide additional information?
I would, thank you, Mayor and council. As a matter of background for the public, upon taking office early last year, the city council held a retreat where you talked about your priorities, and those priorities you refer to as your resilient priorities, we also call these your keystone priorities, but resiliency, as we discussed, is the measure of how quickly you can bounce back when turbulence occurs, and because of that, undergrounding utilities really came to the forefront. It has been a priority that has been ranked highly by citizens in the past, in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, but due to the need to make sure that we are best prepared in times of natural disaster, and as it relates to resiliency, that we can quickly recover from disaster, undergrounding has been an effort that's been discussed by this council from early last year until now. In June of twenty nineteen, the council engaged Dewberry Engineering to complete the twenty nineteen U.S. Highway ninety-eight Underground Utility Plan. That plan was brought back to you, and it is right here in front of me, but it broke the community redevelopment area into four segments, and showed the cost and the logistics of undergrounding utilities, and your response to that is it didn't go far enough. The council wanted staff to go back to the drawing board and look to see what we could do in order to go as far as possible to underground utilities within the neighborhood areas as well. And so your community redevelopment area, which encompasses Highway ninety-eight, has funds that when a property within that area, a commercial property along Highway ninety-eight, when they pay their taxes as they ordinarily would, rather than those taxes go back to San Rosa County, they remain in a special fund to be reinvested back into that area. And so you have sufficient funding for the first two segments on Highway ninety-eight, what we call Segment A and Segment B. The council, when considering the plan, quickly realized that Phase C and D just didn't make sense. Phase C is the area that includes the interchange to get to Pensacola Beach, and that's going to take a lot of coordination with FDOT, we know in accordance with your master plan that there is a, you know, there's already a long-range plan to redesign that interchange, so it would be throwing away good money to underground utilities where hopefully we can get assistance with the state at a later date. Half that, where you have Baptist Hospital, there's very large transmission lines, that also has some feasibility issues. And so the plan within the CRA is affordable. Outside the CRA, of course, you had to think about how we could accomplish this. The city has a franchise agreement with Gulf Power. The electric franchise agreement grants a utility the right to use public rights-of-way within the city for facilities such as poles and wires in exchange for a fee. The City of Gulf Rees and Gulf Power franchise has had a franchise since nineteen eighty-one. The term was thirty years, and in twenty eleven it expired, but Gulf Power and the city has continued to abide by the terms of that original agreement. And so from the time that the council reviewed the Highway ninety-eight Underground Utility Plan, staff looked at the cost and has been working with Gulf Power, and we have come up with a map that you have here that shows undergrounding along all major collectors. So if the city were a body, what you see here is that we are undergrounding along your spine and your major arteries, and that is important because that is essential in order to finally push out through the rest of the nervous system. The cost of this project total is, we think approximately eighteen million dollars, as we've been working with Steve and his team and Gulf Power, we think that there's opportunities perhaps for even a turnkey design bill project in coordinating with FDOT, they've assured us that we can work within their driveway, which means we won't have to acquire property which further drives down the cost. There are other factors that we're continuing to work on that we think are going to allow there to be additional monies to be able to come back to the city council at a future date and start prioritizing those neighborhoods, and work it hopefully even further than what you see here. We have every indication with Nextera being the family, I'm sorry, the parent company of Gulf Power, that we can see costs decrease significantly from what you heard from New Bay even last year, and I'll let Steve talk to that in just a moment. But the point is, is that we have to now agree to a new franchise agreement, and we have been negotiating that agreement for the greater part of a year. We've been working with our consultant and specialized legal counsel in that regard, and the electric franchise renewal highlights that are in the ordinance in front of you this evening include the following highlights. The term of the agreement is for the typical thirty years. In September of twenty twenty, the franchise fee will increase from three percent to six percent of the monthly gross revenues produced for the sale of electric power within the city. Pensacola, Fort Walton Beach, and Crestview, all cities around us have a six percent, in fact, the only two cities who don't are us and Milton. Milton is at five percent, they're negotiating right now to reach six percent. And so what the council would be doing is that upon second reading, you would, on the same agenda, if approved, then you would have a subsequent action to approve a resolution that would encumber that differential specifically for the purpose of undergrounding utilities and related infrastructure, so that your residents, even ten and twenty years from now, know that that money is dedicated for that purpose. And in addition to that, there are, within the agreement, there are limitations on Gulf Power's ability to interfere with pedestrian traffic and existing future drainage projects, and a late payment penalty clause if Gulf Power or in the future, if there were a merger or some other type of corporate shakeup, if they were not to remit payments as scheduled, and that would, of course, obviously be not in case of a natural disaster or otherwise. We certainly understand that exemption. So the average customer would see an increase of three dollars per every hundred dollars of electricity billed. That means that, again, per month, the average customer will pay a difference of three dollars, and the result is that we will be able to underground all utilities. We expect that after design, we would be under, you know, construction before the end of next year, which is very, very exciting and making sure that we are a hardened city, best prepared for natural disaster. So that is the presentation, and in the nutshell, again, you have Steve Rhodes, and some of his partners on the phone, to speak on behalf of Gulf Power if the mayor and council have any questions. The recommendation tonight is that the council approve upon first reading and set the public hearing and second reading for your next meeting of May eighteenth.
All right, thank you. Steve, do you have anything to add to that?
No ma'am, you labeled it a great job of summarizing the activity over the last couple of months, discussions between Gulf Power and the city. I just want to say that we've enjoyed a long relationship between the community, the City of Gulf Rees, Gulf Power Company, and we believe this is a good agreement, moving forward to continue to enjoy that same relationship.
All right, thank you, and we're looking forward to it as well. This has been a priority for a long time, but just no way to make it happen, so we appreciate you working with this too. Leslie, have we had any comments or communication regarding this?
I am not guarding ordinance.
Okay.
Mayor, I did want to just emphasize one thing, and that is that the effective date of the ordinance has been revised and pushed back, and so the effective date would not be until September, and the first funds would be remitted in October. So that would not preclude us from moving forward with funding plans, but it is out of consideration of where we find ourselves currently with the bid mandate.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, council, do we have a motion and a second?
For approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments regarding this?
I have a question.
Okay.
So Sam, you're saying that, your initial saying was we were going to do the spine around Gulf Rees Shoreline through Fairpoint, and then down South Sunset, it looks like, and the easy part of the corridor, ninety-eight, for lack of a better way to call it, and that was going to be eighteen million?
That will be the eighteen million. When we brought to you the first plan, it was just within the CRA.
Right.
Right, and so now what you see in front of you, again, it's a very conservative estimate of eighteen million, but in talking with, you know, Steve Rhodes, our continued conversations, the corporate feelings, certainly Hurricane Michael had a big part to do with that, the corporate change with Nextera had a big part to do with that, but we do think we can accomplish more than what is on that map for that cost. The eighteen million comes from the fact that it's a fifty-fifty cost share between the CRA and the differential with the franchise fee.
And so that eighteen million, you're, you understand where to put it in the funding thing, and that extra three percent is going to make the payments on that fund?
That's exactly right, so it would be a revenue bond, and the dedicated debt service would be split between the CRA and the franchise fee. So we would be looking for a low-interest line.
What about expanding that area once it's there, is there incentive, would there be incentive for private owners to invest and come up with a plan and so forth? Seems like we're, it's good to have that wide arterial, and what the spine, but it seems like you really get the effectiveness when you're able to tie onto everything coming in like so.
Yeah. This plan for undergrounding utilities utilizes new money, and what I mean by new money is that within the CRA, you have development which is coming online, which will be paying additional tax revenues, you have for, you know, the next thirty years, as you have new property owners, they will be helping to fund this plan, but ultimately, it's three hundred and fifty thousand, you know, within our city, and it's another, you know, anywhere from three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand within the CRA. We look at that as new money, the good thing is, we can do this without having to cut any service or existing programs. If we wanted to go above eighteen million, I don't have a funding plan for that. The only way to do that is to increase revenues somewhere else. And so what I would instead say, because I know that the council doesn't want to do that, is when we get to the point that we have either, one, bid this project out, or we have entered into an agreement with Gulf Power to design, build the project, which could also further drive down the cost if they're working with the various utilities, then we'll have a better idea of cost, and our thinking is, and I, you know, I always want to under-promise and over-deliver, so I feel fairly confident when I say to you, we'll be able to get more than this done for that, and once we have a better idea of what that money is, let's say we have an excess of four million, then we can look to prioritize, because a third of our neighborhoods already have undergrounding, and for the two-thirds left, we can look to see what a cost share might look like, there might be other grants that are available, we might be higher prioritized for some of, you know, state monies, and so I think, number one, we need to get this done, we know that, in order to be able to achieve the second phase, which is to push out through the neighborhoods, but we think there will be remaining monies within the eighteen million to get that done.
So my question is, then, all those people and all those businesses that are in that red line, will they all go underground at that point? Will we be running underground cables to each, powering to each and every one of those as we do that, or will it just still be, the bulk of the poles will be gone, will there still be drop lines to the houses?
There will still be lines to the door, there will still be lines to each business along the way.
But it'll be, you know, it'll be in the air?
Or underground or underground. It'll be underground along the collector, and so from, let's say, the driveway to that property, it will be above ground, and so what we can do, I mean, especially along the spine, is...
Typically, they bring the service in from the service to your house.
Right.
It's your responsibility.
Right.
House, that was going to be my question, who pays for the, from the service to the house, which is going to be the underground, and that typically is the owner.
Right, so that you're trying to find how you're going to get on to tap into it and get off. It's going to be still a lot of wires all year after eighteen million, I mean, I think Tom was making the point that, well, as new people come on, they can be underground, I assume.
We do require for new development, we require...
Like sort of like being there, all of a sudden you have to do the underground part.
Yes, so for all, like, you know, the new hotels, for instance, they are required to underground their facility, but our project manager can work with those properties that are along that route, and while they're there, it's a great time to reduce costs to underground them, so we'll, you know, look to see if we can maximize savings while we're installing it.
Sam, can we move ahead with the franchise agreement and not encumber the funds so that we can further explore the issues that are being addressed?
Yes, I mean, that, it'll be a resolution that can be placed on the agenda at, you know, whenever you see fit.
I mean, for me personally, that's an awful lot of money, I think it's a good investment, but I think we need to get some feedback, more feedback on what it's going to cost, and what it's going to actually accomplish for us, like the point JB made about, well, we're still going to have a lot of wires in the air, and we just want to make sure that we're, you know, I'm hearing it, I think it's going to be good, I just want to make sure about that, but I would be prepared to move ahead with the franchise agreement today so that we can get that done and then continue on.
I think you gave some more information, because I think that people are thinking that if we go underground, that all that's going to disappear, and that around the time, and it's not, you know.
Yes, it will along, like, just as you're driving down Highway ninety-eight, it's going to make a huge difference, because you're not going to see those, you know, hanging lines, and the same along your collectors, but as it relates to going across the yard, this does not factor in that cost. You do have, I mean, really, you have all the time until September, you won't start seeing additional funds until October, there won't be any additional, you know, the additional three dollars on anyone's bill before September, so you have plenty of time to continue to talk about the project management side of it, and of course, hopefully we'll have Craig Chamberlain with the CRA here as we go to.
Look, if you've made a trip to Panama City since October eighteen, look at it and say, this probably worked well, I think, so, there's no question about it.
Quite a good figure, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's my point about the residents and some sort of hookup plan that would be on, ready to go at the time that it's underground, that cable had gotten on their street. Kind of a problem with that, unless say you live on a cul-de-sac, and you're the only one on the street who wants to go underground, and you gain nothing there because everybody else is still above ground, and by the time it gets to you, the sticks are broken up or something, so to speak, so that's one, just to tag on to this program, I think, to get a citizen to buy in on sharing the cost, or a late payment plan or something, to tie in as they get next, makes a roll.
I think as we have the service availability on the collector, it's easy to talk about the service drops, we may find that it's, frankly, with the savings that you have, you can do the service drop to the door along the collector, but a decision of this council is going to be, do you want to do that, or do you want to pull those monies and use it as a cost share for, as you say, Mayor Pretin, in order to get more buy-in from your neighborhoods, because they are, they would have to do a cost share at some point, have to work with HOA, so.
Do we, just one quick question, do we have a sense for what it would cost on average or in a range for dropping it from the new cable to the house, I mean, for what each house would cost?
Steve, are you still on the phone?
I think Jeff, Jeff is on, Jeff, are you still there?
Little color.
Yeah.
I know, I worked through Jeff Boulay, it was close to nine.
Yeah.
Personally, it's not that expensive.
Three to five grand, I think.
Are you guys...
That's okay, thank you. Yeah, if they're all fucking right, I'd try to do.
Steve, the question was for, like, a residential home, what's the, what's the average cost for the service drop from the road to the house?
I'm going to let Jeff answer that question, if he does this, or make the thing, he'll be able to give you some better understanding of that question.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Hey, hi everybody, Jeff Boulay, it ranges, I think, to his first-class home, it ranges on the length, how far it takes you to your home from the power pole, and the next option is, is we allow the customer to put the conduit in, it saves them a little bit of money there because most of the time, you want to not only vary the power lines, you want to vary AT&amp;T or Cox table or beach house, but just do like a shared stretch, the range is around from like seven, eight hundred dollars up to no more than like two grand for a whole ton. It's just, a lot of calls is really digging the conduit in, that's the majority of calls, it's not involved going under a sidewalk or a driveway where you have the toe under, you got to kind of jet up under there, and that's where the labor starts kicking in, so range is likely that range, you know, so we always give the customer options, say, hey, we can do it, option one, the power will do all of it, or option two, we'll supply the, the conduit, and you install it, or option three, we'll let you buy the own conduit, do our spec, and we'll let you install it to our spec, and a lot of them expect money there.
Part of that is important, but also you have to, what do you call it, a drum? What is that, for the power grid then? You have to, you have to...
Oh, the meter can, yeah, oh. Oh, so y'all mentioned about, you know, converting the meter can from overhead to underground. There is some cost involved there. There are some meter adapters that I'm researching right now, that are counterparts that FPL is using, to avoid having to bring the meter cans up to new codes, which can get really expensive at a home. And but this meter adapter allows you to convert the overhead service to underground and it looks really good. It's been a bad time to FPL and we're going to try, we're going to get all the detail on that and see how we can handle that. Even now that here is typical for these areas, other areas across our districts.
Jeff, what about, is it basically the same cost to go out to a commercial building? I guess I'm thinking like our shopping centers or standalone businesses?
It's extremely more expensive for a commercial service to a building than it is residential. You, most of the time, you're dealing with prepaid power. You're dealing with a lot more underground cables. And we, we've done some estimates for the city of that, that I could, I could share with Samantha to y'all. Give y'all some ideas on the ballpark or how much the electric is costing to convert an overhead commercial service to underground. Unfortunately, it's pretty much expensive, but, you know, it's very doable. We got the cost, that's kind of ballparked.
All right, that'd be great if you would forward that to her with me and Houston and Seattle. Anybody else have any questions with Jeff?
Yes, I just want to interject that chances for the CRA, they budgeted one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per service drop. So it is included in the budget within the commercial area.
Okay, all right.
Good job, good shooting.
Yeah, any other questions for Jeff or Steve? Okay, thank you guys very much. All right.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, bye-bye. All right, so I think we're ready to take a vote. Favor say aye. Oh, aye and opposed. All right. Pass is five zero. All right.
I'm not opposed, I'm just like...
We're still thinking. All right, next resolution is number twenty-five dash twenty twenty, and that's adopting provisions to city's personnel manual. So Samantha, you'll walk us through that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Of course, we have the Personnel Manual on file for anyone who would like to review it. It is suspenseful and full of conflict. There's a heroine at the end. I wish, but, but there is a heroine to this story. Her name is Mary Jane Bass. She and her team and Russell have just done a great job for many, many months working with our staff individually with our department heads. There's not a one five fit all to any organization, obviously, and certainly not a municipal organization. And so we reviewed the Personnel Manual, knowing that it had been a number of years that it was not, you know, fully compliant with changes to state and federal law. That has not been an issue because, of course, no matter what our Personnel Manual says, if there is a conflict, we follow state and federal law. But it was time to update that. And so that is what we did. We cleared up, you know, ambiguities. You have a framework of the Personnel Manual and the memo here. Just like with the Purchasing and Procedures Manual, we're going to work with it. We're going to keep a list and we expect within a year, if there's issues, we'll bring that back to you. So I'm asking that you approve this so that we can start using this new manual and work with our legal counsel. And, but we do anticipate within a year, we have issues, we'll bring it back to you for revision.
Leslie, do we have any comments or questions?
No ma'am, do not.
All right, thank you. All right, Council?
Not to approve.
Does he got a second? Any discussion? Yeah, thank you for doing that. Mary Jane and Sam, please, everyone on. All right, favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say aye. Thank you. All right, next we'll go to resolution number twenty-six dash twenty twenty, and that's requesting Tiger Point WWTF funding for our restored dollars. And Samantha?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the San Rosy County has a Restore Council comprised of area representatives. The city manager is Gulf Breeze's representative. Before me, it was Buzz Eddie. And there was a first, what we call amendment to the Restore Multi-Year Implementation Plan. And from that allocation of funding that's made possible from the DUKI Oil Still, you have grant monies available that just now, we're at the point where we're hoping to be able to draw on them soon. And those are stormwater projects and septic abatement, which is outside the city. So your West Basin, a very large project, we're waiting on Restore funding for that. And then on Soundside, you have over a hundred and fifty homes that will benefit from septic abatement money that also is from Restore. Because those monies have been allocated and they're in the hopper, as it were, finally, we'll, at some point, get the notice that we can start drawing down. But the Restore Council is meeting again to consider projects for Amendment Two, which is basically the second iteration of the Multi-Year Implementation Plan. And so the council have priorities and those were submitted and they primarily were, to great surprise, stormwater, septic abatement, and replanned water. We submitted those to the Restore Council, which met for the first time with the, to review the Second Amendment projects on January fourteenth. After that meeting, I shared with you a link to the video as well as the agenda and the discussion from, you know, my colleagues on the board was that projects need to be very regional and that those projects that were exclusively within a city or any local government jurisdiction would not receive its higher priority. We were assured that there is sufficient funding to fund all the projects, but the Restore funding would have to be replenished from the state before we would be in line to compete with those funds that were spent of first priority. And the first priority is, was upgrading the Navar Beach wastewater treatment plant. And the second priority was the City of Milton's wastewater treatment plant. And the comment from the city manager of Milton is that the challenge is that the City of Milton may need to wait two or three years for that funding. And they really need the funding in order to attract other sources of funding because they're also asking for a state appropriation. And I left the meeting realizing that, obviously, the thought process had changed from those first round of projects we had submitted, which were looked upon very favorably, because though we certainly understand the position that Milton finds itself, it actually is not at a critical capacity as our Tiger Point wastewater treatment facility. In fact, our Tiger Point treatment facility, that expansion from two million gallons to three point five million gallons is needed entirely because of the unprecedented growth in South Santa Rosa, which is outside our city limits. As you know, within the City of Gulf Breeze, we are entirely built out. We do not need a plant expansion. It is because of those county residents. And so we have a great project, we just had not put it forward. And I've also shared with you a presentation that with your approval, I would put forth to the Restore Council when they next meet on May nineteenth at two thirty P M. And that presentation starts off by just recapping some of the comments that were made by the council members. One of the other questions I thought was a really good one, and it was, if we fund something, does this then free up other monies in that organization for them to do something else? And the response by the highest two priorities was no. And so I think that we can be competitive because we can bring them back a yes. So you have a funding plan for the expansion of the Tiger Point Treatment Plant. Your funding plan is that you have been saving tap fees, I mean, for a number of years because no plant expansion hits any local government by surprise. Growth does not happen overnight, but it allows you to forecast out future years what your needs are going to be. And so you've been saving those tap fees, but also you have debt that is maturing and you have already committed that future revenue to service new debt to the tune of about eight hundred and fifty thousand a year in addition to your tap fees. And so what this proposal does in the resolution that's in front of you tonight is it reemphasizes the council's priority for septic abatement inside the city. And so what we're requesting is six million dollars for the expansion of the Tiger Point Treatment Plant, which is related to water reclamation. Also recalling from the time that we first met with the Restore Council until now, we have signed an agreement with Santa Rosa County and Holly Navar to expand replanned water in the south end of the county. So that is a pivotal difference. We have to expand the plant in order to provide that replanned water. The Northwest Florida Water Management District is helping to fund, you know, in the amount of ten million dollars. And so if we receive the six million dollars for the expansion of the treatment plant, then it frees up that funding to be allocated inside the city for septic abatement. And last year, you engaged a firm, BDI, to complete a septic elimination study inside the city. And you know that that cost is about thirteen million. And so this further commits that if we, if we free up six million dollars that right now is encumbered, that you would match that dollar for dollar for a total of twelve million and virtually eliminate all septics within the City of Gulf Breeze. And so that's the proposal that is in front of you. That again, is another resiliency priority that this council has really hit hard on. You're serious about septic abatement. If we are not successful, then that means that the City of Milton will receive funding for a treatment plant that is not at as critical capacity as the treatment plant that's serving South Santa Rosa residents. And it means that we will need to get in line and it will be at least seven years before our state residents will be considered for funding for septic abatement. So it's very important that our commissioners understand that by approving this project, that they're approving it for their residents. And in turn, that means it's going to free up money for us to be able to, in turn, take care of our residents. That is the resolution and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm just glad you were aware and revised what we had initially planned and regrouped.
Mayor, that's a very good point and we really appreciate the county. That has allowed us to submit an alternative project, so we appreciate that very much. Thank you for making that point.
Leslie, do we have any comments?
No ma'am, you should go.
All right. Council, do we have a motion?
Need approval, second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? All right, hearing that, we will take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing say aye. Passes five zero. Next, we'll move on to resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty twenty. And Samantha, did you review that?
Yes, thank you. The resolution twenty-seven twenty twenty rescinds the provisions and the city council's previous emergency resolutions, which may be inconsistent with Governor DeSantis' most recent order for the phased recovery and reopening of businesses. The mayor and council will recall that within your emergency declaration, the only businesses that you incorporated by reference of the governor's executive order were bars and restaurants. And so the state of Florida is right now governing the reopening of all other businesses. And the phased reopening of restaurants and bars would likewise follow suit by this resolution. It further just reiterates that the city manager and administration is taking a measured approach and that you are continuing to authorize that approach moving forward toward the month of May. Of course, in the headlines, we're seeing that other cities went from, you know, entirely prohibiting gatherings in public spaces to now entirely being back open. And Gulf Breeze took a different approach and that was a measured approach. We redeployed parks attendance and recreation assistance to be park monitors and we were able to continue to keep open some of our outdoor facilities, which were closed in other communities. And so we were pleased with the reports that we provided to the mayor and council in April. That means that our basketball nets went down to half capacity. Our tennis went down to half capacity and volleyball. When we, our parks monitors witnessed people, you know, not adhering to social distances and we said something, they listened and they disbanded in most cases. I also want to add that the City of Gulf Breeze passed a resolution enforcing CDC recommendations by penalty of fine two weeks before the governor. So certainly, no one can say that the City of Gulf Breeze has been lax. But I think that the mayor and council have done what local governments do best, which means that you were able to gauge, you know, the potential for community spread within Gulf Breeze. And as a result, as we sit here tonight, you have zero cases within the City of Gulf Breeze. That means that those in the assisted living facilities now, thankfully, are healthy and they have been removed from the list. You have not had any cases of community spread COVID. And what that means is that those other cases within the city were related to travel. But the Department of Health did not find an instance where there was spread from those public facilities or from any of your businesses that remained open. So we're very proud of that. We think that's our report card and we're going to knock on everything and continue to be very vigilant. But we would propose through the rest of the month of May that we continue to take that measured approach, which means that I'm going to continually keep you updated and you're going to likewise, when you hear from citizens, provide me that feedback so that we can not have to wait for a meeting to take action. The state of Florida is continuing to say schools are closed and that means that our after-school program will remain closed throughout May. Our pandemic plan follows Santa Rosa County. And so we are listening very much to what, to what they're doing. And as it relates to like our recreation facility and being able to open back up once the state lifts, lift, excuse me, lifts the restriction from groups of ten. Let's say they raise that to a group of fifty. Now, obviously, the city council can do likewise if you so desire. But we can't do anything less restrictive than the state's order. We can only be more restrictive than the governor's executive orders. And so that is where we are right now. Wanted to just share with you an update. And then, Mary Jane, if you'll touch on anything that I left out related to the resolution?
One thing I just wanted to make sure you're clear on. The way we drafted the resolution is that, one, as Samantha indicated, we have in place restrictions on restaurants and bars. As you know, today is the effective date of the governor's coming back for restaurants and allowing the twenty-five percent indoor capacity service. So by adopting this resolution, you would be ratifying that as well and putting that in place as a policy for our city. In addition to that, what this resolution says is that going forward so that if next week before you meet again, the restrictions are rolled back on bars, which are specifically mentioned, or even on businesses that are not mentioned, gyms, fitness centers, whatever, as those restrictions are removed, then the city would follow the governor's order. Now, as Samantha just said, by, you know, she is going to be keeping you informed with what she hears and knows if for some reason rolling back the restrictions, you know, is problematic and you do see more cases and there is some need for you to consider some additional action that is more strict than what the governor is allowing. Then in that case, you could come back, you know, convene a special meeting or whatever or act again at your next meeting to tighten up again. But again, as she said, we cannot be less strict than what the governor is requiring. We have to, but we can be more strict. We can pass our own emergency declarations under home rule and statutory authority provided. You may be wondering about our meetings. The governor has not changed the order regarding the use of the communications media technology that we've been using or using tonight. So we're still allowed to do that. And in fact, I think, you know, his orders stand on that. that, and in fact, I think, you know, his, his orders stand upon that. If at some point he, and, and you have been meeting, um, you know, with a physical forum present, so that's not problematic, but if he were, if we weren't doing that, and he were to lift that order, then, you know, all local governments will have to go back to meeting, you know, physically with a forum present, and, um, you know, it may be that he'll issue some order that rolls back on the use of the communications media technology. But again, there are some options we can look at if we wanted to choose to continue meeting in the way we've been meeting, but as Smith said, the measured approach seems to be working, and so, you know, this gives staff flexibility in implementing when you meet again, um, but you can always come back and say, you know, call for it, the mayor to call for it, Samantha could recommend, do we have a special meeting to, to change for it if they don't meet again?
I don't know if this is related or not, uh, with the local state of emergency. Uh, are we still getting requests for information from the auditors?
Um, I don't know that it is related, but the answer is yes. So throughout the pandemic, I have received, uh, four or five, uh, new emails with, uh, single-spaced requests that, I mean, I've not, I've not totaled, and, um, I have shared with them my concern, there was, you know, one point that we had three staff in all of City Hall that, um, aside from our utility building skeleton crew, and, um, and the response I got, you know, back was, we're all doing our best during this time. And, um, so they've made it clear, they followed up that they expect a response, um, they don't, they made clear they, they don't, um, expect me to stop responding just because there was a pandemic, so that has fallen to myself, and our assistant city manager told me, we continue to work with our staff who are working remotely, um, but, but certainly that has, uh, I would say even, um, increased during the pandemic, it has not decreased.
Is there food you'd go to versus, versus recourse there? I mean, do we go back to Senator Broxton's saying, look what you've done, or?
Well, what we've heard from Senator Broxton is that, um, the reason why the audit began is, you know, we had a homeowners association along Tiger Point, one of the fifteen, that wrote petitions. We, we know after the state audit was called for by the Joint Legislative Audit Committee that, uh, those petitions fell in one of two lines. There was, uh, one said that was asking a question, is the golf course being overwatered in violation to D E P? Simple question, simple response, the state auditors were able to review our records and say, no, they are not violating D E P, and they are watering as they should be. And then the second question was, is it legal for South Santa Rosa utility customers to pay more of a cost than inside the city? And of course, what we know is the city of Gulf Breeze charges less per volume metric gallon than any of our surrounding utilities. We charge a six percent surcharge, and for instance, city of Milton charges a twenty-five percent surcharge. We can find no one else who charges as little as us. Again, very fair question, easy to answer, we weren't afforded that opportunity. That was two years ago, and so every facet of the city has been, um, audited, uh, and the questions continue. As anybody inside or outside of the city, I don't think it even matters if you're inside Santa Rosa County, has a question, then the auditors are reviewing it. Um, we, as you know, a few months ago, were told that, uh, the state auditors are not going to be turning their attention to Santa Rosa County's emergency management, which includes all fire departments in Santa Rosa County, and it also includes our volunteer department. I don't know if that is because of the Scambia County Emergency Management, or if they're even receiving an operations audit. I would personally find it really rich to find out that we are being audited over here if they weren't, but I don't think that the audits are going to end, and one of the challenges for us are just continuing to calculate the costs.
Well, my question would be, is, is it really that essential at the time that we're in local state of emergency, that this, this is like a bowling alley, is it? Protest, we can't go back inside. Look, until this is over, we're gonna put you on the back burner.
You can. I'm, I think that, um, I have openly discussed with the auditors that the questions seem politically motivated. I know that there is, you know, is a political candidate who has gone to Tallahassee and has asked a lot of the questions, and so part of why I'm trying to be as absolutely responsive as I can is because, uh, I don't know if in the end it's going to become a political tabloid of an audit that's just going to be used for someone to run for office. That's my suspicion based on the, um, the leading questions that we are being provided. Um, so you can, so that's just the trade-off. If you were to protest that we shouldn't be doing this during the audit, it may certainly be playing into the hands of a political figure who is hoping to use this, um, tabloid of an audit come August or September, and I'm just guessing because, of course, I've not seen a draft.
Could the council and mayor put a letter together to send to, uh, Governor Ron DeSantis and see if he, uh, could look into it, see if he could put a cease and desist in this?
Or would that be Jimmy Frusco, she's gonna ask, or would they not in charge of the office?
Well, there is a, they, they office of state auditor general, and it is that office that is conducting the audit, and, um, I'm not sure exactly, I don't know that they all underneath other departments, technically, they, they answer to the legislature. And, um, you know, as you know, a couple months ago, uh, if you were to mention, I reached out to the state auditor general's general counsel to, you know, ask, try to get, you know, some, some response back on what was going on, why was it continuing on and on and on, and initially, my discussions with him indicated he, you know, did our concern, but, um, it then quickly changed, and we were right back, you know, where we started from, and he was, uh, no, I guess they have more questions. So, we are. I, I don't know what we can do. I think, you know, Samantha can certainly use her judgment in terms of, and I think she has, um, used her judgment in terms of what are the priorities right now, especially, you know, while we're in the circumstances we're in, and if those questions need to be put aside, and, you know, there's not really, to my knowledge, um, certainly we are required by law to comply and respond, but, um, I don't know that there's any particular timeframe, and I certainly don't think that we've been unreasonable at all, if not, we, you know, the staff is on overboard to try to respond promptly and reasonably, but at times, we all know that just under normal circumstances, city business has to take priority. And as we've expressed to the state auditor general, to the audit team, I have to the general counsel, this has really entered city operations, so it's, it's costing our taxpayers money, and, um, but I don't know what we can do without it other than just to continue to do our best to respond in a timely manner, but, you know, also trying to double priorities appropriately as well.
Samantha, I think wasn't it about a year ago that you gave us the talent of the time and the hours that it's been spent? Are you still, or somebody still staying up with that? Because I think that, again, not now, because that can lead to controversy, but, um, at some point, when you can or someone can, I think that would be very interesting for us to hear again.
We, we absolutely will work on that, and for the last three months, um, the majority of the questions have related back to the nineteen eighty-five loan program, the, um, the council's intentions back when Gulf Breeze Financial Services was created, um, then the council's intentions when Capital Trust Agency was created. Um, the response I get a lot is, uh, well, you know, just ask, you know, Ed Gray, he should be able to jump on it. Of course, Mr. Gray's time hasn't, you know, he's still doing important business as well. And so the majority of the questions, um, just for, you know, the public who's listening know, we're not talking about Tiger Point. I haven't answered a question about Tiger Point in many, many months, many, many months. We're primarily talking about the prior administration, the previous mayor and council. You don't know the previous mayor and council's intentions from the late eighties and early nineties. And, um, and so it causes a lot of speculation and a lot of going back and looking at minutes. Uh, and so we would, that's why it takes so much time. I wish it was just as direct as me pulling up a file, but we had to go back and research, um, a lot of this. So, uh, thank you for asking the question. Obviously, I had a lot to say on the matter, that's what is frustrating, I'm, I'm trying to be responsive in consideration of you, um, but...
Question from Mayor Jane, is there a statute limitation, how far back you can continue to go on things like that nature?
Not that I'm aware of, but the authority under the statute for the state auditor general's office is very broad. Um, I have questioned, to some extent, the authority that they're, um, here, uh, but, you know, it's walking the fine line to say that they've stepped over it. I don't know that they typically have again because of the breadth of authority that they have. Um, I, yeah, I had some question about whether it was instigated appropriately, but because it was not, citizens were pinned, this, the, um, they're not registered voters, the petition to the senator, but again, Senator Broxton does have the authority to go and ask that they, um, start the auditing. He simply forwarded, you know, this petition and this request to the auditor general's office, and it started out in what seemed to be rather narrow fashion, is my understanding, and of course, I wasn't on board at the time, but, um, it has since, you know, taken off under what appears to be the broader authority of the auditor general to basically look into anything they want. Um, so that, I just, it, it's very frustrating because there's not, there doesn't really seem to be any way to contain it.
Well, it's out of your control, we just have to go around, work with it, and move on.
Well, and if there is, um, anything that either of you would like would be helpful, you know, certainly we would love to do that to support you and to share this over. Um, I do think it's unfortunate, you know, that it has gone and gone, and I believe at one point, uh, Samantha, you were given the understanding that it wasn't because they were, there were major problems, it was just because they couldn't.
Yes, that's during the preliminary exit that Mary Jane and I had, was it a year ago? Yes, a year ago, and so...
All right. Okay, thank you. Leslie, do we have any comments or questions from the public regarding this?
None, I'm sure not.
All right, council, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing, aye. All right, next we will move on to our consent agenda items, and it's about the school resource officer agreement pertaining to one school here.
Move for approval for the school resource officer agreement and also approve that part.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a second. Do we have any public comments or questions?
None.
All right, hearing done, council, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing, aye. All right, thank you. Next, um, I'm just... Okay. This is for the, uh, the town. Okay. Okay, um, all right, at this time, we'll move on to action items, and, uh, action item A is authorization to proceed with the sale of Tiger Point Golf Course. Uh, Samantha, I think that if you are gonna start us off with that.
Yes, thank you. Mayor and council, the matter of timeline, the council held a public workshop for the purpose of considering the sale of the east course, I'll say most recently, certainly wasn't your only workshop to consider the issue, but most recently on November fourth, twenty nineteen, the workshop was prompted by the recommendation of the South Santa Rosa Utility Board that the council consider the sale once again. The council generally agreed to proceed with an updated appraisal, which rather than highest of its use, appraises the property as an operating golf course. The council also generally agreed that it would be desirable to sell the revitalized property in fiscal year twenty twenty. December eleventh, twenty nineteen, the council engaged Sean Brantley to conduct the appraisal, which was completed on February ninth. The city council was advised, and the property has been publicly listed since March tenth. You do have, I believe, uh, DeeDee Davis, uh, your real estate broker firm, NAI Pensacola, on the phone. Just wanna confirm, DeeDee, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, great. And so, mayor and council, we have been working with NAI Pensacola to answer questions, uh, from, you know, prospects who have been, uh, kicking the tires, as it were, uh, requests coming in to our staff, looking at the operational costs, obviously wanting to see the books, and, um, Samantha, DeeDee Davis and her firm have been coordinating those back and forth. We received, uh, an offer for a low, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, we received interest from, uh, potential buyers who, uh, wanted to know if they could have, you know, other plans for the property, and of course, that is a very important term of the city is that it maintain a golf, be maintained as a golf course. The reason for that is the value to, uh, the city is that it remain a spray field, and, uh, and so, uh, interest, I think, although, uh, you know, has been good, that has been an important term as we've been, you know, talking with prospective buyers. And so on April ninth, the city received... Nope. On April ninth, the city through its broker received an offer from Emerald Coast Partners, uh, of N W F L L C, to purchase Tiger Point Golf Course and the ongoing golf club business. It is a, a full, uh, sale price offer of, uh, one point nine nine nine, nine nine nine. Uh, the council will remember that the, uh, east course was appraised in twenty sixteen and in twenty seventeen, and, uh, it was actually appraised for the same value, and those two years it appraised for two point five million. And so this listing price is not, uh, far off from that. Again, this is in consideration of, uh, the full books, and of course, that includes, uh, you know, fixtures, capital assets, uh, et cetera. That includes the sale of the business operations, uh, and equipment, acceptance of the affluent disposal easement agreement, reservation of easements for city, uh, utilities, and, uh, the buyers requested a closing by August thirty-first. The buyers also worked with us, there was an original, um, acceptance date, uh, I believe April, uh, seventeen, do I have that right, DeeDee?
Correct.
Yes, and so, uh, understanding that we were in the midst of a pandemic, uh, we appreciate, uh, being able to, um, bring this to you now, and, uh, and so the pending offer, again, represents the full asking price. The request in front of you this evening is that the council authorized the city manager and city attorney, uh, to begin to negotiate those terms. Uh, our hope in order to meet with the August closing is that, uh, those terms will become acceptable, and we could bring that back to you maybe even as soon as your next regularly scheduled meeting for early June for your further consideration. Um, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, DeeDee and ask if she has anything else that she would like to add.
Not particularly. Samantha, you did a really good job of capitalizing where we are with this. I just would like to reiterate, there, there was no contract at this point, this is an offer, and one that we thought was very solid. We've done a little preliminary vetting, but we feel that the offer is worthy of entering in serious association, um, over, and then hopefully we can get a contract, uh, a draft of the contract act from city attorneys shortly, so that the buyer can review and we can begin negotiations and hopefully come to a agreement.
Okay, all right, thank you, DeeDee. Um, Leslie, I know that we have some public comments and questions regarding that, so DeeDee, you hang on to, and then Leslie goes.
Okay, I'm gonna just, uh, to point at a time, and then if you guys wanna just stop as we finish the comment for that, or, and address them, or?
Oh, just your ball, what's up, your ball?
Okay.
How many are there, Leslie?
Um, four, six, eight, ten, twelve. Okay, well, comments, all consolidated, I'm down this side.
Okay.
Comment one is from Mr. Larry Sessions at 1138 Park Lane, 32563. He's the vice president of the Santa Rosa Shore Homeowners. Mr. Sessions asked that I convey to you that we had our commitments this evening. So he wasn't able to attend online, that he would be reviewing the recording and to see how the city council meeting handled these points of concern that I'm about to read. Mr. Sessions sent two emails. The first email was sent on May the 2nd. The question, the neighborhoods around the golf club should be privy to a public information meeting prior to the city council meeting to consider the sale. Therefore, please table a consideration for the sale until the public information meeting is held. That was the first email. Email number two has three questions. As neighbors, we are concerned about the golf course. Many of our property owners own land that abuts to force perimeter. We support the sale and believe we have the right to be informed about the future of the golf course. Therefore, we request the following. I request a complete copy of the sale agreement and requirement for restrictive covenants. Request the ability to offer comments for consideration before the contract is finalized. Require a public notice to be posted throughout the committee for a public hearing for all interested parties prior to approval of terms of the sale. Your consideration of these reasonable requests is appreciated. And again, that's from Mr. Larry Sessions. Our next comments are from Ms. Patty Burke, 1317 Fountain Trail, Gulf 3, 32561. Ms. Burke asks the following. Is the appraisal a value available to the public? Does the sales agreement restrict the use of the property to golf course only? When and how was the golf course advertised for sale? When did the council vote on offering the property for sale? Comments three from Mr. Rodney Miller, 1170 Seabreeze Lane, Gulf 3, 32563. He is the president of the Santa Rosa Shore's homeowners. Mr. Miller states the following. First, we hope you and all the city personnel stay in safe during this difficult period we are all going through. In view of this and the following concerns, a failure of the city to provide adequate enhanced public communication to the impacted residents, we'd like to request that this subject action scheduled for this Monday meeting be tabled until adequate notification is provided to the entire 32563 and those homeowners on and near the golf course and members of the golf course. I am getting requests from our residents that the city of Gulf 3, the city coastline and around the golf course, so that everyone impacted, will be aware at least three days in advance of this proposed action. We are neighbors and should not be treated differently than those of the 32561. Thank you for your contribution to our community consensus. Comments four from Jennifer Waters, 3911 West Mandura Road, 32563, Tiger Point Village Homeowners Association. Ms. Waters asks the following. How will the city assess the buyer's commitment to our area? What criteria are being used to qualify the prospective buyer's ability to own operate golf courses successfully? Will the city consider applying a new deed restriction or the extension of the existing deed restriction to regulate the land for golf course, golf only use? And the last question, if contract negotiations are successful, would the prospective buyer be commensurate to meeting with a Tiger Point area HIA consortium, a small group of HIA board members representing numerous Tiger Point communities? Remain confident that the city will be considerate of our homeowners' apprehensions and will acknowledge the potential impact of the council's decision on those homeowners. We're taking some time to address our concerns. The next set of comments is from Julie Davidson, 1110 Lions Gate Land, Gulf 3, 32563. Her question is, what are the city's plans for the west course portion of parcel one, which is excluded from the sale? She is with Lions Gate HIA. The next set is from Norma Green. I apologize, I'm going to spell his last name, G-R-E-N-O-G-H. I don't want to butcher it. 1106 Lions Gate Land, Gulf 3, 32563. His questions are, in regards to the contract to be negotiated for the sale of Tiger Point East Golf Course, will the city require a deed restriction to be put on the property such that the land may only be used as a golf course in the future and may not be converted to residential or commercial development? In regard to the remaining west course property, what is the current zoning status? Have there been discussions for the utilization of this property? The next set of comments is from Scott Mitchell, 4144 Longwood Circle, Gulf 3, 32563. Are there deed restrictions regarding the sustainability of the golf course and facilities? And this current offer is accepted? Thank you. The next comments are from Julie Schroeder, 1148 Lions Gate Lane, Gulf 3, 32563. As a resident in the Tiger Point community, I want to ask the following. Question number one, the $1,999,000 asking price seems to be very low for $198 per property, even considering it is for the value in use as a golf course at a time when golf courses are not as strong as they once were. Is this because the appraisal of the property was ordered with the request that the appraiser provide a resale value with the intention of selling off the property quickly? For example, was it specifically priced low enough to sell in less than two months? And if so, did the appraiser provide another higher value conclusion extending market exposure for a longer period of time? Question two, was more than one appraisal ordered to obtain a broader range of value can use before the property was marketed? Or did everything rest on the one appraisal by brain? For example, I noticed that it's in accounting to completely obtain three appraisals before selling off property. Question three, did you place any qualification requirements for the potential buyer to have a network to support running a golf course property or years of experience in managing a golf course property to ensure the buyer would be able to successfully operate the property once they purchased it? Who is the buyer and what is their golf course management experience? I looked up Mount Coast, Route Northwest Florida, and on Sundays, I cannot find an active LLC under this name. Is the city offering financing for the golf course purchased through the Capital Trust Agency or through another method? Will the sale of the golf course be structured to have deed restrictions to ensure that the property be operated as a golf course for years into the future? If so, how many years into the future will the deed restriction provide for? And last question, would you please table the vote on whether or not to move forward with this contract to provide time for the city to see a copy of the reappraisal and know the conditions of the sale? Next comments are from James Fisher, 3858 Sabre Two Circle, Gulf 3, 32563. My name is James Fisher. I live in Tiger Point. I've been an active member of the Tiger Point Country Club for nine years. Does the ownership group have enough operating capital to run the golf course? Most golf courses fail due to lack of sufficient operating capital. Down to Leslie. Question two, what are the plans for the clubhouse restaurant? This has been significantly neglected over the past 10 years and should be a source of increase in revenue. Does the membership group have any plans for capital improvements to the course? Is it currently in fair to good condition, but still requires significant work to repair certain bumpers? Is the ownership group committed to operating the property as a golf course? Or do they plan on developing the property in the future? Do they plan to manage the course? Or will they contract with an outside company like TruGolf? Why wasn't the front nine holes of the west course included in the deal? From Martha, I apologize, I cannot pronounce his last name. I'll spell it, J-A-C-E-N-Y-I-K. She lives at 3759 Bengal Road, Gulf 3, Florida. Would you please make clear where the new school is planned to be located and which portions of land the city is planning on stepping? Traffic issues and drainage issues are already significant. Mr. Jen Brenner, 1105 Lions Gate, Gulf 3, 32563. Good evening, mayor and counsel. We are homeowners in the Lions Gate subdivision located near the golf course. We have a couple of questions. Does the city of Gulf 3 have a master development plan for the city, including the golf course? How is the current golf course business used currently classified? Are there any plans with this seller to reclassify the property with this sale? What is the property to be reclassified if the new property owners intend to request either variance or property rededication? Is there any, is any member of the mayor, council, or executive members within the city government deriving any direct or indirect financial benefits, either directly through sales and/or from any direct businesses that are involved with, including any possible financial benefits on her behalf to our single members who may not be a city employee? What is the purchaser's intended use of the purchased property? How does the intended purchase property use fit into the city's master development plan if the city of Gulf 3 has one?
Who is that last one from?
The last one was from Mr., excuse me, Mr. Jen Brenner, 1105. Yes, sir.
Mayor, can I just make one clarification for the record? You obviously did a great job of reading these very accurately. But the, I just want to make sure everyone understanding is clear. We're trying to read out all those nines behind the end of the purchase offer price. It is $1,999,999. So it is $1 less than $2 million in the actual offer that we have. So I just want to be sure. I'm going to just round off and say $1.9 million. But again, it is, that's why it's difficult to read it. But that is the exact offer price. So just wanted to be sure to put that this way.
Mayor, could I just make a comment about the comments and questions?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, it does sound like the major underlying concern there is whether or not it's going to continue with the golf course. Of course, there are restricted covenants in place that will require that. And I really think while all of those questions and comments were really good, and if I were living right there abutting the golf course, they would be, my questions and concerns as well. But most of those are premature because no contract has been negotiated at this point. Tonight is strictly to just let us proceed in working out a contract and all of those other things will be dealt with as we move forward.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sam, did you want to address any of these?
I've been answering questions that you have.
Okay, all right, counsel, do you have any questions or comments based on what we saw?
I think if some of the people's concerns, the price seems low. You know, they say, well, gosh, a house on the water is $2 million. How can a golf course, you know, sell with all this property and all this amenities and all this? How could it still be worth $2 million? But on a commercial appraisal like that, it's based on the revenue that is driven. So it's handcuffed a lot. I mean, for example, for me, I had that marina on Pensacola Beach. I couldn't have built that marina for $5 million. But the appraisal was at $3 million because of what money it generated between the rental properties, the boat rentals, the boat stuff. So it kind of, you know what I mean? It, you have to kind of look, step outside of the box and look at that a little bit.
Yeah, unlike the marina, you can't repurpose this property.
Right.
This does it as a golf course.
And so, certainly says so with the marina. You know, it was designated as a marina and that was kind of. And so, that's kind of how you were selling their business. And that's kind of what we're doing here too. We're selling a business at the same time. So I think it's kind of confusing to people that they don't really understand. How can, how can all this property and all these assets only be worth $2 million? That's just crap.
It's not like somebody buying a business to break it up and sell it off piece by piece. And because it's going to have the deed restriction to potentially keep it as a golf course. So I would assume whoever's purchasing it has the ability and knowledge and feels that they can continue and make it go, even in times where golf courses are struggling. And this isn't presumably, this is, will be.
Right.
So it's not like they can buy, they say, oh, well, we're going to just redevelop it and sell it off to the parcels. And my understanding too is that the comparables with other golf course sales released with the $2 million price tag is pretty reasonable.
That is, that's absolutely correct. You know, it is a catch 22 situation because if you want to keep it as a golf course, which is definitely in the best interest of those neighborhoods, if you want to keep it as a golf course, it has to be appraised as an ongoing business, a golf course. If you want a higher price, then the only way to get that is to break it up and let it be redeveloped into a residential or commercial.
And the covenants prevent that, it's obvious, correct?
They do, they do.
A lot of your questions are already been answered because it's already been set up that way to begin.
That's right.
I don't think it's just the rumor mill. You know, people, you know, talk about it because they probably saw what happened with the driving range and they felt like, well, somehow or another, this got sold, it becomes something different than it really was for the driving range. They're really not prepared now to add those on that type of thing. So.
And the appraisal is a public document. Obviously, Sean Brantley is, you know, just well-known and respected for his appraisals throughout the state of Florida. He does a lot of work for the state of Florida in addition to, you know, counties, you know, cities, you know, in addition to the private sector. And so, because he does so much, you know, appraisals for public entities, he is accustomed to calls, you know, and certainly, all appraisals, you know, conducted on behalf of the city are public records. So the comparables are within the appraisal as well as the review of, you know, the business enterprise itself. So it really, I think, would answer a lot of those questions.
So to answer those questions, if people have that question, yes, they can get a copy of the appraisal.
Absolutely.
And I think a couple of things, and DeeDee, you can help with this one. One of the questions, and others related to, well, there would be, I guess, a way of knowing that the offer and the buyer is financially secure. And so, I think you could probably address that.
We, as we work through this, of course, we get documentation that proves its creditworthiness. And that's most definitely a legitimate point. But definitely, the deposit is a significant deposit, as we reported, that is part of due diligence, yes.
We already have that deposit?
No, we don't have a contract, we can't, we actually can't collect that deposit until we have a fully executed contract. So we don't have the contract draft yet, so that would be forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, Sam, would you just go over for the general public about the letter that you sent out with the explanation and who you sent it to?
Yes, on April 28th, you know, six days ago today, we sent a letter out. It took some time and effort of staff because we thought about how to most effectively communicate with 15 homeowners associations along Tiger Point. So not just those who abut the east course, but really, we wanted it to go out to anybody in Tiger Point. And we wanted it to be, you know, targeted messaging so that we can cut through the rumor mill. And so, we worked with our billing software company and did some trial runs that Miller helped us with where utility billing would send me an email and we had to try in a few different windows because it was a lengthy letter. But ultimately, we were able to get that done. By sending out that letter, we received a confirmation of all those that were successfully sent and inducing the email that is attached to the customer's utility bill. So it's the same email that they received that they have a water leak or that their bill is due. And so, we're going to continue to do that as we move forward. One of the questions was about the school in sale, which is not on the agenda tonight, so it wouldn't be appropriate to discuss. But for updates related to anything with Tiger Point, so we're pretty excited about that new feature. That was sent out, you know, a week ago. And so, we have received positive feedback as well. As DeeDee said, the questions we heard tonight are all good questions. And so, we think this is definitely a step in the right direction to make sure that we can respond as we're hearing what those concerns are and be pretty quick in our response.
All right, thank you. Um, DeeDee, do you have anything else you would like to add?
I don't think so, I think that we are in for a lot of discussion ahead.
I think so too, thank you.
Mayor, I do have one additional question.
Okay, great, sure.
Um, again, this is from Ms. Jennifer Waters, she would like to know if the broker of record sold a golf course before or been involved with the sale of a golf course in the past?
And I would say yes, twice.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, Council, do we have a motion and a second?
Let us vote for him.
All right, to the second, all right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just, uh, one thing, uh, are, are we gonna follow up with the questions that we didn't get?
Yes.
That were lived in here?
Yes.
So you were making a list of the, what I tried to.
Absolutely, and well, and also, uh, the news asked for a copy of those emails, and so we'll share the emails, of course, we'll put them in the public record, and Leslie and I will respond to those, and just as always, when I respond to a citizen, uh, about an agenda item, we forward you those responses as well, keep you informed.
All right, that's not good.
Let's find out the quarter by, again, if it's a dog.
Yes.
All right, thanks. All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? On favor, say aye.
Say aye.
Opposed, sign aye. All right, very nice. All right, now we'll move on to action item, uh, the, oh, that's, all right, that's the awarded bid for City Hall restroom renovation project, uh, submitted.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, in order to move forward with, uh, implementing, uh, one of the projects in your ADA, uh, compliance plan, this is for the, uh, restrooms right outside this facility that our public so often use. The project is budgeted for, uh, $50,000. Uh, after receiving bids, uh, the, uh, the bid is recommended to be awarded to Empire Builders Group for, uh, $78,119. Uh, within this capital project budget is also the, uh, monies for the column repairs for the outside of City Hall, and so, uh, there is, uh, anticipated to be enough budgeted there that there will not require a budget amendment, but because this is an ADA compliance, you know, issue we, uh, that the council budgeted, uh, we do recommend moving forward. And so the recommendation is that the council award the bid and authorize the mayor to sign agreements for the City Hall bathroom renovation project to Empire Builders Group for $78,119.
All right, thank you. Leslie, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
No ma'am, did you not have a decision item?
All right, do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? No, I think we're discussing this kind of before. All right, at this time, we'll vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, sign aye. That's just fine, zero. Action item C is the Maplewood and Circle Lane concrete water main replacement, submitted.
Thank you, this is an item that went to the South Center as a utility board just for informational, uh, purposes. The staff began to advertise bids on March 6th with a closing date of April 6th. Uh, the submitted bids, uh, you see here within the, uh, the memo, uh, this relates to approximately 3,000 feet of water main located on Maple Drive and, uh, Circle Lane to construct the cement pipe, uh, that is prone to failure. The, uh, request is that the, uh, council authorize the expenditure of $362,832.75 for the replacement of the water main in sections of Maplewood and, uh, Circle Lane to be in W Utilities. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, um, do we have a motion and a second?
Let us vote for him.
All right, a second.
Sorry.
Thank you. Um, make questions or discussions.
Maybe anything?
Yeah.
There are, there are other word, yeah?
Well, I was just gonna say, obviously, it's the, um, um, your, South Center of Utilities has agreed, I mean, it recommends doing this, I mean, it's, 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 perhaps possible, and, 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 and,
All right, um, do we have any to vote?
Mm-hmm.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign aye. Pass is high, zero. All right, we'll move on to item D, which is the emergency lift station pump replacement. Samantha?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, likewise, the South Center as a utility board has reviewed this agenda item individually with no objection, but objection, excuse me, this is an emergency lift station, um, pump replacement. The Woodlawn lift station, um, had a failure of both pumps within a short period of time, uh, which now needs to be repaired or replaced. The, uh, rebuilds have been averaging about 40% the cost of a new pump, and the time to rebuild these pumps could take four weeks or longer. There is a, um, portable bypass pump in place at the station until the replacement pumps can be delivered and installed. Um, certainly, when you look at the cost of rent and then the cost of, um, rebuilding, which is not as permanently reliable, uh, this was the prudent thing to do to order the replacements, uh, the, uh, total cost of emergency expenditures is $11,958, uh, to pump and process for the replacement of the two pumps at the Woodlawn lift station, and staff, uh, request approval.
All right. Leslie, do we have any comments or?
No ma'am.
All right, um, hearing that, Mayor, we have a motion and a second. Okay.
Sorry.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion from the council? All right, hearing that, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign aye. Thank you. All right, next, we will move on to new business. Samantha, do we have new business?
We don't, no.
All right, uh, discussion items?
I went to inform the council about the discussions that we have been having about graduation treaty.
Sure.
Okay, um, we thought we might actually have a picture presentation that we could show you tonight, but, um, in particularly you, I think, in this class of 2020 and the year that they have had, uh, we've been talking about, you know, what we do for them, um, that would be something special. So, um, talking, Samantha actually saw something another city was doing, and we realized that we could do even better, and so, uh, refining a plan, we, um, hopefully, we were planning to be able to unveil this maybe right at the night, at the time of graduation, the time graduation would have been held officially, uh, but we met with the senior class officers today and opened a couple of sites around, um, the city, and it will, it will be, um, a monolith-like in the sense that it is a, probably like a 12-foot tree truck, and then, and the site they select, selected is, um, along, um, Shoreline Drive at the peak of the hill, you know, where the little, there's a sitting area, and it's nice and shady and beautiful and passed by a lot of people on foot or bikes and certainly by cars, and so we let them choose between two sites to see where they would prefer that this be. So it will also have, um, Samantha's been in contact with the Skanska, I guess it is, about having a five-by-ten probably piece of the old bridge, um, dedicated to the city with this, and on that, uh, we plan to paint it a color and then let the seniors sign it, and so hopefully at that time, then we can all get together enough that they can come and do it at, together, and if not, we'll just arrange it so that they can come and pick their spot and sign. And then the seniors ask if they can buy, um, a plaque for it, which Ron Foley, our director, had thought about anyway, and so we actually are, um, they are gonna do that, they're gonna get with him, and so we'll have a plaque, like a bronze plaque, that will say that this was created in honor and tribute to the class of 2020, and, um, then each year though, the next class will have the opportunity to come and sign the rock. So we wanted it to be something ongoing from this class, but I think throughout, and I can honestly say, and I've heard others with you comment too, that these, um, seniors have been great, because they have lost a lot this year that usually is what you would consider your most memorable of the senior year, and so they have a long memory of weeks of isolation and being homeschooled and, you know, being much more independent, a different life than they thought, so, you know, we admire and respect them for that, and we know that everyone agrees with us, and we just wanted to do something special, uh, for them at this time, and I will say today, they were so excited, and so I think it'll be a good thing, and when we actually have a rendering, well, we got that and showed it too. Samantha, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes.
All right, okay, so I think that is our, our discussion.
I'm good.
Oh, then, I'll go back. Yeah, thank you. Where's my credit card? Okay, uh, so now public forum, do we have anything?
Yes ma'am.
All right.
Um, the first one is from Jennifer Waters, 9/11, Lesmodura Road, Gulfries, 32563. Ms. Waters says, for open forum, thank you for providing the online format for participation, I appreciate the city prioritizing community engagement and providing this opportunity. She said, I have signed up for the SSRDS online billing and received my bills, but did not receive any communication regarding the golf course. How should I follow up to ensure I receive future communications?
I checked and received a confirmation that Ms. Waters, uh, did receive an email, so we can, um, actually, I can forward that to her as soon as the meeting is over so that she can verify that it is the same email that I've been corresponding with her today, so maybe the thing that, if she would just check her filters and her junk mail, although that would be odd because I've been emailing back and forth with her today. So we'll just, we'll find out what that is, but just to share, we did specifically check to make sure that our HOA president, there was a confirmation, uh, and I've had that highlighted from utility billing, so we'll, it might be a filter issue, we'll, we'll find out.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Um, yes ma'am, I received an email today from, um, Ms. White. Let me make sure it was right, Apple, White. Um, it's kind of a lengthy email, um, so I will read the first half, um, the second half is kind of a, uh, regarding the past of information, explanation, so you can tell me how far you want me to go. Um, thank you, um, City of Gulfries Council members for your service and for listening to me this day virtually. I would like to bring to the council's attention a noise problem that has been occurring every Sunday in our neighborhood since March 22nd, 2020. I'm sorry, at First Baptist Church, Thorpoint, costs submission, many complaints have been issued by surrounding neighbors to both law enforcement and City of Gulfries officials. The problems are length of service and noise levels. I believe the problem originated as a misunderstanding regarding code enforcement interpretation regarding permissible and acceptable noise levels regarding events in our community. Furthermore, it is my understanding perimeters that were originally specified in a permit issued by the City of Gulfries were not followed. To begin, um, we were told that services were only to go for one hour, that Jeff Sping and Gordon pastors should notify residents prior to the event, and that the church should not exceed 90, like, decimals, excuse me. Um, the email goes into further explaining, um, more information, do you all need to continue?
Is that something that you're, you know, you're aware of?
Yes, and, um, and I'll, I actually received an email from Mrs. White today, and also, um, Chief Hawthorne, and Chief Carmichael Hammond visited with me, they've been keeping me up to date, and, um, and so I'll be happy to follow up on that and that I can follow up with each of you.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks Leslie. Good job tonight.
Thank you.
Um, all right, at this time, council comments. Randy, we'll start on your side of the table.
Nope, no comments, thank you.
Tom?
No comment.
Tom? Okay, DeeDee?
I just had one request. Going back to the separation painting and the, the parks and the gyms and all that kind of stuff, uh, I would like to see us, I mean, I, I go down to tennis courts and play tennis a lot, and it's pretty hard to get within, I mean, they've taken the, the nets down every other court, and, and I feel like it's overkill, you know, because we're out there playing, but there's people out there playing with no nets, you know what I mean, pretending like there's nets and playing there, and I think there, there's a part of the separation and people are conscious enough, when they do break and they get back in shady areas, stuff like that, that I would like to see us relook at that, I think that it's a little bit.
We'll put them back up, I talked with Ron Foley today, it was not in the plan to take them down, we did have an issue, uh, and the same with volleyball, where, uh, we just had at that time, you know, a, a concern.
I understand.
Um, but as we said, the great thing about being responsive is we're comfortable with putting them up, and we take them down and put them up, and go back and forth, so, uh, we actually just talked about that today.
Okay, I appreciate that, that's it.
All right, this time we will adjourn. Thank you all very much.